Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please. Bunton?
Here.
Campbell?
Here.
Dempsey?
Here.
Ford?
Here.
Fournier?
Here.
Pratt?
Here.
Menzner?
Here.
Announcements, acknowledgements, communications, and reports. Anybody? No meetings?
Not today.
Not today, okay. All right, adoption of the agenda. I need a motion.
Move to adopt the agenda as presented.
Support.
Roll call. Bunton?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Fournier?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
Menzner?
Yes.
Okay, this is the time for public participation. You may address this body. All that we ask is that you give us your name, residential address, and you adhere to our three-minute rule. And the mic is open. It's all yours.
Thank you. My name is Ken Goiki. I live at 22440 32 Mile Road, Ray Township. It's in the northern part of Macomb County. And I'm here to introduce myself, that I'm a candidate to be the next senator that would represent Mount Clemens. I served six years in the House of Representatives and was termed out. I'm very familiar with the issues in Mount Clemens. While previous in office, I, you know, was, wouldn't know what the taxation issues are with all the nonprofits in the county having such a large presence here. So what kind of stranglehold you have. Same thing with the school district and other things that are going on. I have long roots here in Mount Clemens. I was a student at St. Mary's in Mount Clemens. Also did a couple of classes at Mount Clemens High, but I graduated from Chipwall Valley. Have family still living in the town, and that everybody matters. If you could want to know more, you can just look at my record on the way I voted for six years. I have that history. So, I don't want to be political on any of this stuff, but I did want to take the time to introduce myself and show you actually who I am. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer anything that would be of interest to you.
Do you have a number, or how do they reach you, if they have any?
My email address is goikisgal@yahoo.com. So, I'm very knowledgeable in all the environmental things. Worked on that. I was very helpful with Macomb ISD, as well as with Macomb Community College. So, remember some of my highlights. But I don't want to take up a lot of your time, because it is the Fourth of July weekend, so we can all celebrate our independence and have a great week.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, seeing none. We'll move to administrative responses to issues.
I do have one. A resident inquired about the flooding taking place in the backyards of several addresses on North Wilson and Lafayette, and if there was anything the city could do to assist them. City staff installed submersible pumps to remove the excess water from the properties. After removing the excess water, city staff and engineers were able to locate the source, which was a leaking abandoned water line. The leaking water line has since been repaired. That's all I have tonight.
Any questions? All right, thank you. Approve of the minutes from previous meetings.
Motion to approve the minutes from the work session and the regular commission meeting of June 18th, 2018.
Support. Roll call. Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Fournier?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
Menzner?
Yes.
Bunton?
Yes.
General Business, 9A. Request approval to enter into an agreement with the Michigan Department of Transportation for the pavement resurfacing of Harrington Street. I need a motion. My computer isn't working. I can't find it.
Okay, there we go. Move to adopt the resolution to approve the contract between Michigan Department of Transportation and the city of Mount Clemens for the pavement resurfacing of Harrington Street. M.DOT contract number 18-5320 as presented, and to authorize the interim city manager/city clerk and the assistant city manager, public service director, to sign and to enter the agreement.
Support.
Okay.
Enclosed for your review is the Surface Transportation Program Contract along with a municipal resolution for the pavement resurfacing of Harrington Street from southbound Greshit to Hildale Street. This is a contractual document between the Michigan Department of Transportation and the city of Mount Clemens, which outlines the performance of the project and the project cost. The total cost for the repair of Harrington Street is estimated at $1,372,200. Federal surface transportation funds shall be applied to 81.85% of the applicable project cost. The remaining balance will be funded by the city's major street fund. Please be advised that this contract has been reviewed by the city attorney. The attached resolution is necessary in order to specifically name the officials who are authorized to sign the said contract.
Okay, questions, comments? Commissioner Menzner.
So, other than saying again, Mr. Wood, you're bringing us a grant $1.123 million. It is awesome. And this is one of the few ways that we would have gotten that street paved, so all credit to you for this. I'm wondering when it will start, and when your estimated finish dates are?
As of right now, the project is being bid by M.DOT. So, an actual award, I believe, is scheduled for July 13th. And we'll find out an actual start date. But by the time contracts are all said and done with, between M.DOT and the contractor, I'm guessing probably start right around Labor Day.
Labor Day, okay. And I'm wondering if you've looked at designated alternative routes to the hospital?
We have, yes. And what the plan is, the bid specs actually call to keep Harrington Street open to westbound traffic during both phases of the project, so that you could get to the hospital from the Greshits.
Perfect. And do we need to give notice to, like, you know, the county for their emergency management operations?
Yeah, we have already done that. We submitted those plans to the county.
Perfect. You're just amazing.
Thank you.
Commissioner Ford?
Will it be blacktop or concrete?
It's going to be asphalt. It's going to be actually a mill and cap project. Yeah, it's currently asphalt, and so we're going to take off about three and a half inches and put three and a half inches back. There will be some subsurface restoration in some of those more terrible spots, those locations.
Anyone else? Okay, seeing none. Please call for a vote. Dempsey?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Fournier?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
Menzner?
Yes.
Bunton?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Your motion passed. 9B, request the approval, request to approve a five-year lease agreement with the Michigan Transit Museum for the use of the Train Depot at 200 Grand Avenue. I need a motion?
Motion to approve a five-year lease agreement with the Michigan Transit Museum for the Train Depot building at 200 Grand Avenue, and to authorize the mayor or city clerk to execute the same.
Support.
The Michigan Transit Museum wishes to continue their use of the Train Depot building and is seeking a new five-year lease with an option for an additional five-year extension. The original lease was entered into on December 1st, 1980, with subsequent extensions granted since then. The current lease extension expired on April 30th, 2018, and the Transit Museum has been considered a holdover, month-to-month tenant since that time. The lease agreement has been prepared by the city attorney and contains a 90-day termination clause. The Transit Museum will be required to provide the city with a certificate of liability insurance naming the city as additional insured.
Questions?
I have one.
Yes.
Are they responsible for the building, if there's a new roof required, or any building repairs or maintenance in this contract?
I don't, I think we are responsible. We own the property.
The city is responsible, and...
But they, the Transit Museum has worked with the city and written grants, and has recently had some upgrades over the last few years, with some grant lines.
There's a representative here from the Train Depot. I do have a question. Could you come up, please? Tim, I can't remember, Brock?
Good evening. Tim Backers, 275 Riverside in Township. And I'm sort of the face of the museum. I'm there every Saturday and Sunday. We're open from 1:00 to 4:00, and about to celebrate next year, 160 years, as part of the community.
Tim, I do have a question. Did you, did the roof go on yet?
Oh, yes.
It's on, that's all taken care of.
Thanks to both the museum's efforts and the historic district commission's support, and Brian Tingley's activities, we have a new roof on the building. We've done a lot of exterior work, including painting and repairs and damage, that is simply part of a 160-year-old structure.
Right. Is there any more, anything else that needs to be done yet to the building on the outside?
Well, we, there are always things that we would like to do. And there are some things on the property which we're proceeding with. We definitely need to get a new roof on the tool house structure. And we're through Carolie Schmidt, we've been contacted, a roofer, who has offered us a very interesting bid, and I'm hoping the board of directors next week will seriously consider discussing that action. I think it's something that's certainly needed.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it. Commissioner Menzner?
I've seen quite a few posts on social media right now about the train rides on Sunday from, you know, Henry B. Joy. And a lot of people are interested in it. I wondered if you had any idea of, you know, have you had an increase in statistics for ridership?
The thing that sort of surprises me, and I guess it may reflect my age, is that people find us now on social media. And it has driven the enthusiasm, and we're getting a lot of very favorable responses from people taking the train ride. So, yes, I think we're, hopefully the weather won't be quite as steamy as this last weekend. But yes, we've had a very nice start to the season. And you've probably noticed, if you've gone on North Avenue, we finally have a new railroad crossing on North Avenue, desperately needed with the heavy truck traffic at that point. And I noticed the county road department was out doing all the painting for the railway crossings, both of them on North Avenue. So that is good to see.
And you know what? I just wanted to mention John Jameson. He was very much a huge supporter of the train station and a member, you know, there. And I'm sure that that was a great loss to you. And I remember him fondly.
Yes, I knew him for 35 years, and we were great friends, and I could always rely on him to back me up if I was going to be out of town, or I was under the weather.
Thank you very much. Okay, roll call. Ford?
Yes.
Fournier?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
Menzner?
Yes.
Bunton?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Admittedly approved. Okay, 9C, request approval to enter into agreement for building and mechanical inspector service for the 2019 fiscal year. Need a motion?
Move to approve the agreement for inspector services between the city of Mount Clemens and Matthew M. Berman, and to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the same.
Support.
Matthew M. Berman will provide building official, building inspector, and mechanical inspector services, and shall receive an annual fee of $68,000 and be paid biweekly for said services. With city commission approval, the one-year contract shall become effective retroactive to July 1, 2018, and expire on June 30th, 2019. The contract has been reviewed by the city attorney and the contractor.
Comments, questions? Commissioner Menzner?
So, my response will be the same on all of these contracts, and it has nothing to do with the men or the quality of their work. It has to do with the hours. I'd like to see a per-job or per-hour fee, and I'd like to see a, some specification on the hours that we work, or that they work. I just feel that, you know, it kind of goes both ways. They could be harmed by, you know, if we get a lot of permits in and we get a building growth, they, you know, their wage won't change, and they could actually lose money. But then that works the same way with the city. So, I, again, I brought this up many times. I would like to see either a specification on hours, or paid by the hour, paid by the job.
Okay. Any other questions?
If I could just comment.
Oh, please.
You know, I think we've talked about this before, and at the point that we dictate the hours that they work, they would have to become a city employee, not an independent contractor. You cannot dictate the hours for an independent contractor per the IRS.
You can dictate how many they work. None of these contracts specifically say that.
I don't think that you can, but I'll...
That's fine.
There's a number of tests that the IRS utilizes when they, one, there's a question of independent contractor status versus employing status. And there's a 20-point test. Some of the points being instructions. The independent contractor decides when, where, and how to accomplish the services he's providing. Set hours of work. The independent contractor retains the ability to set his own hours. And it goes on, and on time required, et cetera. There's a 20-point test, and if you get into a dispute, and we've been through this in a number of contracts over the last 15 years, as the city moved from, into more independent contractor contracts due to finances. If it were determined that you, the person is not in reality an independent contractor, but is an employee, then that person is entitled to benefits going back to when they started their service, which would include probably medical and the other benefits that employees are presently receiving. And in addition, you would be required to make the social security contribution of an employer. So, that's one reason why we're not spelling out what the hours are that they are working.
Thank you. Laura Fournier?
The only concern I would have about that is the reason that we voted in the budget to have more money allocated to the building and supervise, or building inspector, was because we wanted him to work more hours and be available more hours. Because right now, we do know that he's only available certain days. And so, while there's, I totally agree, and have had experience with independent contractors, but the bottom line is, we do expect him to be available five days a week during normal business hours. That's my understanding. And if that isn't correct, I would like to know that.
Well, if it doesn't occur, you've got, you can terminate the contracts upon 30 days written notice. So, if they're not performing pursuant to what the expectations are of the administration, then I would suspect that they would take action.
But I just wanted to understand that that expectation is that he be here five days a week.
That's correct.
That's the, with the addition of that building official role, that was the expectation, yes.
Roll call, please. Fournier?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
Menzner?
No.
Bunton?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Motion approved. 9D, request approval to enter into an agreement for the rental inspector service for the 2019 fiscal year. Motion?
Move to approve the agreement for inspector services between the city of Mount Clemens and Michael L. Farren, and to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the same.
Support.
Michael L. Farren will provide rental inspector services and shall receive an annual fee of $48,000 and be paid biweekly for said services. With city commission approval, the one-year contract shall become effective retroactive to July 1, and expire on June 30, 2019. The contract has been reviewed by the city attorney and the contractor.
Comments, questions? Seeing none, roll call, please.
I have one question.
Commissioner Fournier?
How many hours do we expect the rental inspector to be available, roughly?
Can't dictate hours.
I understand that you can't dictate hours, but do you expect him to be available five days a week?
Currently, currently, the rental inspector is around city offices five days.
If we don't measure the expectation of, like, hours, what do we use to measure the expectations of what they're, you know, like, do we measure by how many inspections they do, or what is, there has to be some kind of measure, right?
Right. And it's, yeah, it's the job that's getting completed, right? Is it a number, you know, is it the number of inspections? Is it the quality of the inspections? You know, I can't really answer that for Brian, who's not here. But it's, you know, yeah, I would, I would assume that it would, it would go with, within following suit with how many cases is he creating in court, is, what's, you know, is the job getting completed? Because, I mean, they're hired to do a specific function, and is that function being completed?
I know that, looking at the statistics that we get quarterly, it seems like the rental inspections, the number of rental inspections has decreased. And I don't know, I don't remember offhand the exact numbers, but I remember it was, it had decreased. And so I wondered, you know, is that because we have fewer rentals, or is it because he's doing more thorough inspection? You know, I don't know. I'm sure there could be a reason why, but...
And I believe that there is some difficulty getting into some of these properties. I mean, you know, it would, you can't get into these properties without a landlord or the property owner's permission, right? And I believe that there is some difficulties getting into some of these properties, which can also dictate how many inspections are getting done. I think it creates some other paperwork on the other end, but as an inspection number, it may not be getting completed.
Anyone else? Commissioner Martin?
I guess, I mean, I'm listening to the comments being made, and I guess I'm kind of wondering about our role here. Our role is to okay the contract as it is. It's the administration's responsibility and obligation to evaluate the work ethics or the work that's being done. And if it's not being done properly, or to our administration's expectations, then they have the right and the opportunity to look for another person to do that service, and to terminate that one that is in that position. So, within 30 days, if they're not doing what they're supposed to be doing, then that person can be dismissed and another person replaced. But our situation here is to evaluate the contract, and if it's fair, and if it's reasonable, and to go forward with that. So, I appreciate the comments and the concerns about whether they're spending enough hours, but that's a thing that the administration is supposed to look into.
Have a comment?
Commissioner Fournier?
But if we are being asked to approve this contract, which we are, and if we don't believe, or we feel that perhaps it is not sufficient to get the entire job done, whether it should be an independent contractor, or it should be an employee, or it should be someone who spends more time, I think there's somewhat of a perception that we need some more attention to these rentals. And whether it's the difficulty of getting into them, then it's going to require more hours, because you're going to have to do second and third attempts to do so. I just, so I, I respect our role here, but we have been asked to approve this, and I just question whether or not this is sufficient to get the job done.
I, go ahead. I do believe we did discuss this during budgets, and that would have been the time, if there was any concern at that time, it should have been, I think it should have come forth at the budget meetings. Because now we can't turn around, because this has been set in to the budget, to turn around and say, well, it may not be enough. We should have really talked maybe more about it during the budget time, when the money was, you know, being allocated. And that, to do it now, seems a little backwards.
Well, maybe it was my inexperience, but I did raise it, and I have been concerned about rentals for quite some time. And this just seems, if this is how much money we have to spend on this inspection, then I think we need to really evaluate how we're going to do it. That's my feeling.
I think that that's something the administration can do. Okay. Anyone else?
Okay. I'll let it go.
Roll call. Pratt?
No.
Menzner?
No.
Bunton?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Fournier?
No.
Motion passed. 9E, request approval to enter into an agreement for the plumbing inspector service for 2019 fiscal year.
Approve the agreement for inspection services between the city of Mount Clemens and Joseph A. Orr, and to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the same.
Have a second?
Sir.
Who?
Sir. She's ready.
Joseph A. Orr will provide plumbing inspector services and shall receive an annual fee of $37,000 and be paid biweekly for said services. With city commission approval, the one-year contract shall become effective retroactive to July 1, 2018, and expire on June 30, 2019. The contract has been reviewed by the city attorney and the contractor.
Comments, questions? Commissioner Menzner?
I'm just going to reiterate that putting this contract out this way can cause the inspector to not make as much money, based on the number of inspections that they have to do. If we get an increase, their personal, you know, hourly wage or finances decreases, you know, marginal, or could be quite a bit. Then again, it also goes for the city. So, it's not about the quality of the work, it's not about the men, it's about compensation fairly. And city, the city residents being able to use these services when they need.
Anyone else?
If we don't approve these contracts, then what is the status of the inspections that should be carried out if we were to not approve any one of these contracts?
Well, there are contracts that actually expired on June 30th, and so if these contracts are not approved, you would go without inspectors until you get someone in place.
So theoretically, we could go for weeks or months without an inspector while we reassign the inspector duties to some other person?
Correct.
Okay, this thought.
Anyone else? Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Ford?
Most of these inspectors work for the city part-time, and they have a full-time job somewhere else. So why are we, if he wants to work for a little money, let him work.
Okay. Roll call. Menzner?
No.
Bunton?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Fournier?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
Motion passed. Okay. On to the... Was that the electrical one we did?
No.
Got that one next.
Not where I'm doing it.
No, no.
Now we took the electrical. Okay. Request approval to enter an agreement with the electrical inspector services for 2019 fiscal year. Need a motion.
Move to approve the agreement for inspector services between the City of Mount Clemens and Fusion Electric, Inc., and to authorize the mayor and the city clerk to execute the same.
Second.
Fusion Electric Incorporated will provide electrical inspector services and shall receive an annual fee of thirty-seven thousand dollars and be paid biweekly for said services. With City Commission approval, the one-year contract shall become effective retroactive to July 1, 2018, and expire on June 30, 2019. The contract has been reviewed by the city attorney and the contractor.
Questions, comments? Seeing none, roll call, please. Bunton.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Ford.
Yes.
Fornier.
Yes.
Pratt.
Yes.
Mensah.
No.
Okay. Motion passed. 9G, approval of purchase and payments of invoices. Need a motion.
Move to approve purchases and payment of invoices as presented.
Second.
Are there any questions? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Campbell.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Ford.
Yes.
Fornier.
Yes.
Pratt.
Yes.
Mensah.
Yes.
Bunton.
Yes.
Consent agenda. Motion is approved.
Move to approve consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Roll call.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Ford.
Yes.
Fornier.
Yes.
Pratt.
Yes.
Mensah.
Yes.
Bunton.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Okay. City managers report.
City offices will be closed on Wednesday, July 4 for the Independence Day holiday. There will be no refuse pickup on Wednesday, July 4. Pickup will run one day behind schedule, beginning Thursday, July 5 through Friday, July 6. Refuse pickup for Monday, July 2 and Tuesday, July 3 will be picked up on schedule. The July, August, September edition of the Clementine's Newsletter is scheduled to be delivered with the journal newspaper on Wednesday, July 11, 2018. The downtown sight and sound concert sponsored by the Mount Clemens DDA and Pettipurn Incorporated will be held on Friday, July 13, 2018 at 7:00 PM, featuring Looking Back. McComb Place will be closed from Pine Street to Southbound Grashit. And on Friday, July 6, there will be an Uptown Friday Night Concert featuring Outbound at the Fountain Stage from 7 till 9:00 PM.
Any questions? Okay. Commissioner comments? Commissioner Campbell.
Happy Fourth of July to everybody. And I hope everybody doesn't go overboard on the fireworks.
Yes. Please remember fireworks day before, day and the day after only. Commissioner Ford.
Also, happy Independence Day to everybody. Be safe. Don't lose anything while lighting fireworks. Coffee talk. Again, this, my commissioner coffee talk, of course, everyone is welcome. It will be Tuesday, July 10 at 9:30 AM, John's Family Grill. And if you can't make a morning session, we have Tuesday, July 19 at 7:30 PM at John's Family Grill as well. So come out and talk about current events, what's happening in Mount Clemens. That's all I have today.
Commissioner Bunton.
Yes. One of my pet peeves has always been when grass cutters are cutting the grass, whether it's professional or homeowner, that you not blow your clippings into the street. It ends up going into the sewer system. Our sewer systems are taxed at the least now as it is without that. But if you continue to do that, it's going to ruin those. And we're going to have a big problem. And it becomes more and more meaningful when it starts backing up into your own home. Just some comments. According to Google, bizarre and unique holidays for the month of July. The month of July is National Picnic Month. It's also National Hot Dog Month. And it's also National Ice Cream Month. So keep those in mind. July 1 was Canada Day, Dominion Day in Canada, where they celebrate their independence. Then it's also National Chicken Wing Day. Here's one for you to celebrate. National Joke Day. But July 2 is a good one because it's the I-Forgotten Day. And I do a lot of forgetting these days. So July 4, obviously, Independence Day. We celebrate the birth of our nation happening in 1776. We enjoy the benefits of freedom which the framers intended in the Declaration of Independence and fought for during the Revolutionary War. As we celebrate the holiday, remember the reason for the occasion. International... July 6 is International Kissing Day, National Fried Chicken Day. July 11, Cheer Up the Lonely Day. That's a good one. July 13 is obviously Friday the 13th, an unlucky day in which bad things can happen. So be careful. July 15 is National Ice Cream Day. So there's a lot of days you can pick one, celebrate and get happy. The North Broadway Church of Christ would like to invite everyone to a homecoming event that includes Friday, July 13, Song Fest at 7:00 PM. It's a cappella singing. And July 16 through 19 is MWC I, MWC I Orr, Midwestern Christian Institute Lectureship, each evening at 7:00 PM. All events are held at the North Broadway Church of Christ at 260 North Broadway, Mount Clemens, Michigan. All events are free of charge. So we'd love to see you come. Commissioner Wisdom for tonight. "A loyal friend laughs at your jokes when they are not so good and sympathizes with your problems when they're not so bad." And that's by Arnold Glae... So, please so? Anyway, forget it. Another one for you is "Control your own destiny, or someone else will." And that's by Jack Welch. And that's a good one, too. So with that, we'll say goodnight.
Thank you. Commissioner Fornier.
I just want to make one other comment about the rental situation. And again, I know there are some really great and good landlords in this city. And we... But we do have a lot of rental properties. And I have a lot of personal experience with some of those as we've purchased them and had to tear them down because of the neglect of those properties. There's been a lot of problems. And that is why I'm so passionate about this. Our city has some beautiful historical homes, yes. But if they're not maintained, the cost to rehabilitate them is so onerous, it can't, it's just not worth, it's not worth it. So that is why I'm passionate about this. And whether or not it's a rental inspector or the administration or this leadership body that needs to do something about it, I think we have to continue to look at this issue and do what we can to make this better. And also, that is why we have to... I wish everyone a happy Independence Day. This is why we can voice our opinions is because our forefathers fought for this, right? And I wish everyone a very safe holiday. And let's remember the firecracker rule. Day before, day of, day after, done.
Thank you. Commissioner Ford.
I'd like to personally congratulate the people on Orchard Street. Very nice block party and to the city for having equipment out there to block both ends of the streets. Also, I was down on Shady Side. There was a couple of families that had real nice picnic down there. Real nice time. That's all.
Thank you. Commissioner Mensah.
So I just wanted to point out again how hard the staff are working to bring grants into the city. 1.123 million today for Harrington. We talked about a last meeting, I think it was 350,000 for lead pipe abatement to our homes. This is money that the city staff, primarily Jeff Wood, has written grants for. And he did such a great job on the writing that we've been awarded all this money. I don't think we give the city staff enough credit for that. I know that the fire department has written all kinds of grants. We've gotten other DPS grants. I just appreciate your hard work. And like always, you rock. So, you know, people have been just angry lately. So I wanted to point out some good things that are going on. You might have seen it in the news. John Richardson, he was a former business owner in downtown Mount Clemens. He owned the bookstore prior to paperback writers in Weirdsville, right in that spot. He's been passing out water to people waiting at Mount Clemens bus stops. His own time, his own money. It's a good thing. Sarah Lutonheiser, she is a city resident who is recognized by Macomb Community College, the Phi Theta Chi... Phi Theta Kappa chapter of Beta Lambda Kappa. But that's the world's largest honor society for two-year colleges. She was recognized for academic achievement and leadership. Jill Steiger, a city resident and a member of the Macomb County Quilt Guild. This year, the Quilt Guild donated quilts to Turning Point in Mount Clemens, the Weber Cancer Center, the Children's Hospital and the VA Medical Center in Detroit. Ken Kish, he just reminded us in his article yesterday about Baker College doing dental service for very low cost to residents. Teeth cleaning, 30 bucks for adults, 20 bucks ages three to 14. X-rays, 20 to $30. Other treatments, fluoride treatments and cleanings are available. If you want an appointment, 586-790-5238. Then we have Manasa Hammond. He graduated from Mount Clemens High School in 2016. He is now a US Navy Airman and was just assigned to the USS Ronald Reagan in Japan. These are our residents that are doing good things and they should be honored. Where have I been in the last month? I've been to O'Halloran's. I have been to O'Halloran's so much, I want a plaque on my table. I've been to Orleans, I've been to Madison's, and I have been to Phil's. No matter what you call that, no matter what CVS it is, it will always be Phil's to me. Just like Pine Knob will always be Pine Knob. It is not going to be DTE Energy in my book. I've been to Three Blind Mice. If you don't know, Three Blind Mice, you can go there and play cornhole out on their patio. We had a vicious competition. I, of course, lost. But I've been to the Lock and Key Shop. I've been to the library. Had a great time there. Got some really interesting information about their summer adventure program. I've been to the Rack Bowl a couple of times. Their patio, they've got their new schedule out for all of their bands and music. Check their website. They've got some great music and things happening. I've been to the Mount Clemens Grill. And I went to the Bootleggers Ball. Commissioner Fornier gave me this really cool hat. I didn't have one. It looked awesome. The Emerald is beautiful. You know, they're doing a great job there. They're bringing a lot of interesting and unusual concerts. So we appreciate, you know, his interest in the city. And that's what I have tonight. Be kind to one each other and enjoy the Fourth of July.
Thank you. Good segue. The Emerald Theater. We will be having a bicentennial fashion show, July 28, at the Emerald Theater, 1 o'clock. It's 200 years of fashion. And Jeanne Cotola is, it's her fashions. And we have about 29 or 25 models. Great. The show's going to end with some really neat wedding dresses from the 1800s all the way through, I think, 1990 maybe even. I'm not quite sure. But it's going to be a great afternoon. The tickets are $35. You can get them at City Hall, Max &amp; Ollie's, the library. We're only limiting the tickets to $350. It will be a complete tea with tea sandwiches and scones and Devonshire cream and all that stuff. And tea, Three Wives Tea from the Cracker House. So if anybody is interested, please support this great event. I think it's going to be a lot of fun. And thank you to all of those who did show up at the Bootleggers Ball. We had a really good time. It was fun. And stay tuned for more events throughout the year. We're trying to really showcase Mount Clemens and 200 years. And we're having a really good year. The parade committee has started. Had my first meeting. So we're on a roll for that. And it's going to be bigger and better than ever before. Right, Jeff?
Right.
Right. City is going to put a float in there this year. So with all that, have a safe Fourth of July. Please do remember out there, fireworks are only the day before, the day of and the day after. Please be courteous to your neighbors and to our veterans who have issues with this, with the fireworks and to the animals. Just a little courtesy goes a long way. And thank you. And have a safe Fourth of July. And I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Ford. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? To adjourn.